Good evening, welcome to the August tenth, two thousand and sixteen zoning board of appeals meeting. Could you have a good roll call please?
Ms. Shoup, Mr. Blaze, Mr. Hebert.
Here.
Mr. Maroon.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Mr. Crockett.
Here.
And Mr. Richard.
Anybody here is voting in the room? Okay, great. Do I have a motion for approval minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? See none on favor? If we take a pledge allegiance please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And the first appeal is appeal number twenty-five eighty, it's a miscellaneous appeal by Jonathan Madore, two fifty-seven Payne Road, this is map R forty, parcel fifteen, representative. I think you state your name, address, and relation to the process.
Jonathan Madore, two fifty-seven Payne Road.
Thank you. And if you're going to explain what you're trying to accomplish, we'll go from there.
Yep, I'm just trying to build a ten by ten storage shed on my property.
Okay, you're currently in HPZ zone, is that correct?
Yep.
And we do have a letter from the planning. Planning board, I'll just read this into the record, excerpt from the August eighth planning board minutes. Jonathan Madore requested advisory opinion of miscellaneous appeal of a non-conforming use application to the Board of Appeals for two fifty-seven Payne Road, this is map R forty lot fifteen. Mr. Chase explained to the board that the applicant is seeking an advisory opinion to the zoning board of appeals for the expansion addition of a shed of a non-conforming use single family residence in the HP district. Mr. Madore stated he is trying to put a shed on his property for storage. Mr. Wood asked why the shed is located in the front yard. Mr. Madore explained that there's a seventy-five foot setback from the stream. Mr. Major asked for a vote of the board to see who was in favor of the request. Vote was unanimous. Mr. Major said the board will make favorable recommendations of the zoning board of appeals. And so that's into the record. And let's go right into the requirements for the miscellaneous appeal. As I see this, this is pretty straightforward. The property was zoned, you were zoned out of compliance when the, 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 the board, just if anybody doesn't remember, when the town changed the ordinance and zoning in that area, he was already a resident, so he actually was zoned out of compliance even though there's nothing really to do with it. So it's to me fairly straightforward, but we'll walk through everything. Here we go. Proposed use will not create unsanitary and harmful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. If you'd like to state for the record what your arguments are for each one of these, that would be great.
Oh, yeah. It will not infringe on any of those as a stored shed.
And you said it was ten by ten.
Ten by ten.
Proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
It is on the front lawn, however, it has passed the required setback for the road.
You said, I noticed in the planning board that there's, there's a stream setback.
There's a stream in the woods behind my house.
And that's the seventy-five foot.
Yep.
Is that, isn't any way to override that through this process, or is that required?
It's, it's required unless he gets permit by rule from DEP to reduce that setback. And he chose not to do that because he was happy with the location.
Okay, great, thank you.
What is the, what is the front yard setback there?
Front yard in the HPZ, I think it's twenty-five feet. But since he's a non-conforming use as a resident, I'm not really sure if that applies. It's well beyond that anyway, so. The stream, just for your information, is over there. Look at the big screen.
Is there a way to zoom up on that at all?
Well, I can, but then I'm gonna have to move around the screen.
If you can't, don't worry about it, I just.
Well, I can, I'll do it for you.
Thanks.
That's, that's as big as I can get it and keep it all on the screen. So there's your, there's your stream. And there's seventy-five foot setback to the shed location.
And the home is?
Behind that, right over. Can't see it real well, it's labeled right there.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, the next one is, proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing or, and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
It is on the front lawn, does not infringe on any traffic or, or.
And proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Correct, it will not do any of those things.
Proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on the water supplies.
It is not near any water.
And proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood, physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures and density of development.
Yep, it's only ten by ten.
And it's not in the shoreline zone, we've eliminated the stream protection zone, that you own the property. And proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation. Really kind of relevant on that. Okay, great, thank you. I want to open the public, would anybody like to speak to this on public record? Any letters on this at all?
Nope.
Close the public hearing part of this meeting and come to the board for questions, comments, or a motion.
I think it's pretty straightforward, I don't see real, any issues with it. I, I certainly don't see that it is gonna change the character of the neighborhood or cause any traffic issues or erosion.
I have no comments to add.
I'll make a motion to approve.
That'd be great.
Second.
Discussion on the motion to approve as requested? Is that correct? See none on favor? That's Janice, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
You too.
Okay, the next appeal is appeal number twenty-five eighty-one, it's a limited reduction of yard size appeal by Anthony Heman, twenty-seven Vesper Street, this is map U one, parcel twenty. Did I get your name properly? He's not here. You don't look like Anthony.
What's that?
You don't look like Anthony.
No, Anthony's not here, but I am, Walter Wilson from Design Company, representing Anthony Heman.
Thanks, Mr. Wilson. If you'd like to state what we're trying to accomplish, we'll go from there.
This house is located at twenty-seven Vesper Street, and the applications for the limited reduction in yard size, it's in the C D C R one zone, the New Higgins Beach Character Base zoning district. And the house previously got approval from the zoning board to put a new foundation on it and raise it up from an elevation of twelve to fourteen point one feet. However, the existing building now and before the raising of the foundation has, does not meet the minimum setbacks on the west of the sideline or the front sideline of the property. The new setbacks on the sideline are eight feet and the front yard's eighteen foot minimum. The second floor of this building has sidewalls that are only four foot ten inches high and with an eight twelve roof pitch. And the building on the sidewalls is not high enough to put egress windows in the existing bedrooms on the second floor. And also, the stairway going up to the second floor is on the side of the house, so as you go up to the stairs, the headroom at the top of the step on the left side's only four foot ten inches high, and on the right side, six foot ten inches high. So the lack of egress windows in the sidewall and the headroom of the stairway don't meet code. They have to be, in our application, make the sidewalls higher. So we're proposing to take the roof off that section of the house and make the sidewalls seven foot four inches high, which will allow for egress windows to be placed on the sidewalls and also to increase the height so that the headroom of the stairs meets code going upstairs to the second floor. The building, as it's constructed in this area, is only, let me see, nineteen foot by twenty-eight feet in length, nineteen foot being the width. And so there's not enough height with the roof pitch on it and the low knee walls to construct dormers on the side of the house that would meet the code of the character district that were imposed because of the restrictions on the dormer sizes that you have to have. And so the only way of getting the egress windows up there is to increase the sidewalls and raise that section of the, of the house up. The existing building is approximately twenty-five feet from ground to top of ridge in this section of the house, and with the proposal of the sidewall increase and the roof pitch increase, it'd be about twenty-nine feet. So it'll be about a three and a half foot increase in overall height, and in the district we're allowed to be thirty-five feet high, so it's well within that height restriction. Basically, the house right now is classified as a one and a half story house, and with this change in the wall height, it would be probably classified as a two-story house, and in the zone, a house of two and a half stories high is permitted, so we're underneath that limitation as well. So what basically the application is for is that the required setback on the Wesley sideline of eight, eight feet due to the placement of the house where it is now, it's three foot two inches from the sideline at the front corner of the house, and as you go back, it gets further in from the sideline. But on that Wesley sideline, we'd have to get a variance of four foot ten inches for the placement of the house where it is now. And the front of the house required minimum setback for the two-story portion of the house is eighteen feet, and right now, it sits at fifteen foot six feet from the front yard, so we need a front yard variance of two and a half feet. Now, nothing in this proposal is gonna increase square footage on the lot, no one's, no square footage increase on the building itself at all, other than changing the height of the second floor over this portion of the house. So that's basically what we're asking for is a couple side yard reduction variances.
Anything to add on this, Mr. Wilson?
Nope.
So this was brought before us before.
Pardon me?
This was brought before us before and?
This application wasn't brought before, what was brought before was the application to raise the foundation up underneath the house, which they had, they had done.
Were you involved with that?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking that question is because, and I know you better than that, and I knew the answer, but I wanted to make sure on record. This isn't an after-the-fact proposal, a skirt around, because you're involved now after they found out there was a problem.
Right.
As opposed to somebody coming in thinking they get through.
Well, I say after the problem. What they asked for before, the building's in the same location, they just asked to raise it up and put a foundation under it.
Right.
Previously. And at that point, they hadn't even got into doing any changes or alterations to the house other than raising it up.
So then they decided after that that they wanted to continue with?
Right, actually, this spring and this summer. And they started doing some work on the house siding, some window changes and so forth, and then they found out through the building department that they couldn't put a dormer on it for egress windows without getting a variance, so here I am.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Want to open up to anybody who should speak on this issue? Close the public hearing part of this, come back to the board for discussions, comments. We'll go through the criteria in a minute. All right, so we're talking about a limited reduction of yard size, seems pretty straightforward again, and the question I had was regarding whether or not this was a sideways into something.
No, no. We stopped, we stopped work because, as I said, they put an application in for the dormer, I couldn't approve it, which is the normal course of how we get to the appeals board. And we can't approve something, we have to deny it, and then they come with an appeal, and that's what they're doing now.
Great.
When, when was that the last program on that?
I don't know.
Walter, do you have to know?
It's been a couple of years, it wasn't, it wasn't while I was.
A foundation deal?
Yeah.
I've got it at, let me see here, I know I got it someplace. Three or four years, I think. Yeah, it was something, let me see, hold on. Probably reading right by it.
Two thousand and ten.
April.
Two thousand and ten.
Yeah, so six years.
Two thousand and ten, I believe.
So they.
Little bit, little bit further back.
Between that time, they, they have just, they have just finally gotten to a point where they're ready to kind of fix the place up and make it.
Exactly, I guess their fir-, their first thing they had to do was get the foundation up at the time.
Perfect, okay. The application for the limited reduction of yard size must demonstrate the following. The existing buildings or structures on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested were active prior to July third, nineteen ninety-one, or the lot is a vacant, non-conforming lot of record.
The tax record has the houses being built in nineteen fifty.
The requested re- reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district.
Yeah, the proposed alteration will allow the building to be made more compliant with the building codes and the character requirements of the zone, and therefore more compliant and compatible with the area.
And due to the physical features of the lot and/or the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
Proposed alteration need to apply for the, the proposed alteration needed to apply for this variance because the existing structure does not meet the setback requirements, and the alteration proposal is a vertical in nature and will not exceed the allowed building height or increase in existing lot coverage.
And the impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from a greater than, the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement.
Yeah, the impacts and effect of the proposal will not be substantially different from a greater than those impacts and effects of a building which conforms, the building itself does not change in square footage and height, number of bedrooms or anything, it's just a vertical expansion.
And the applicant has not commenced construction of the enlargement and expansion building or structure for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested, so the board of appeals is not considering after-the-fact application. The things you were saying were mine are.
Like I said, some work had been started, new siding, some of the windows on the first floor.
Nothing to do with the?
Nothing to do with the actual part that we're talking about with the dormer, that's where the job was stopped until we came for a variance.
And this seems pretty straightforward for me, just it's about fire and safety. Any board members, questions, comments, or a motion?
The only question I had is, they, when they were raising it up, they just didn't think to look at it then, as far as?
At that point, no. At that point, their concern was, I guess evidently, the condition of the foundation, they want to stabilize it, they wanted to raise it up to the new elevation, and at that point, it wasn't a consideration to do any extensive remodeling work on the house. They were just looking at the foundation coming up at that point. That's my understanding of it.
It was seven years ago, right?
Why, why wouldn't, why wouldn't that have come up when they got a permit to raise it up?
If I may. I wouldn't get hung up on that, that, that project was about putting in a new foundation. It had nothing to do with any remodeling inside the house, completely separate, unique issue. We've had several, since I've been here, several variances where foundations needed to be replaced, and in order to do that, it would raise the structure more than a foot, which is sort of the limit. At that point, they have to come in for a variance because it's a non-conforming structure because of the location of it on the lot, and so it's a foundation replacement. There was no plans, as Mr. Wilson said, there, there was no plans at that time for a remodel. They weren't even looking at that, they were simply looking to get a new foundation in place. Two totally different projects.
I, I would say that in light of the fact that this project is only going to bring the, the, the building more in compliance with, with not just the area, but with safety vectors as well, I certainly have no issues with it.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
And a motion to approve as requested has been moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? See none on favor? That's Janice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, have a nice day. Isn't anything we look at?
If you have a question, ask the question.
Okay.
I don't want sidebars. If you have a question.
Yeah, I had, my, my question was, when, when they came in for the raising, we don't look at other things that could be non-conforming or codes or anything.
If the request is for a foundation to be placed, there's no reason to look at anything else. It's a totally separate project. If they have no plans to remodel, why are we looking at anything? We're only looking at the foundation and where the building exists on the property.
Okay, the next appeal is appeal number twenty-five eighty-two, it's a variance appeal by Elizabeth Schisler, forty-eight Bayview Avenue, this is map U one, parcel one oh seven. Seems like a, another fairly straightforward one. Mr. Fisher, good seeing you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions, this evening representing Beth Schisler, who has joined us, she's here in case any questions come up. As the chairman has mentioned, it's fairly straightforward, we were before you on this very same project about four months ago, about four or five months ago, earlier this spring, we did receive a variance from the board at that point. The issue at that point was to raise, physically raise up the house, replace its existing frost wall foundation because it is in a flood zone, it's in an erosion hazard area, we're gonna be putting that on piles as is typically required in those areas now, and then lowering the house back onto those piles and calling everything good. Unfortunately, what happened after we received that variance and the contractor that Ms. Schisler had contracted with at that point, started to get everything together for the beginning of the project, and that contractor suffered a debilitating injury that is, makes him no longer a contractor. So at that point, Ms. Schisler then went to another contractor, who said, certainly, I can take care of this. He took a look, or they took a look at the house at that point and said, given the, you back up here a little bit, the house is fairly small, it's on a very small lot, and it's a relatively small house on the lot, and it's two stories currently. The reason I mention that is that the contractor took a look at this and said, this is the new contractor, and said, I am not at all comfortable from a safety perspective raising this house up as high as it needs to be raised up in order to be able to actually put piles underneath it, as opposed to just doing a frost wall foundation, for instance. So it's predominantly a, a safety issue, because he said, I'm not gonna put any crews underneath there, when, when that house is up there, primarily because of its proximity to the water and to the winds that come off the ocean. He was just a little unnerved, probably rightly so, about a two-story house that would be elevated up almost eleven feet above grade with nothing supporting it other than the, the four pillars, and having a wind come along, and the house is gonna be up there for several weeks, and then having a wind coming along and doing what we wouldn't want to have a house like that happen, or happen to it. And many of those houses typically, by the way, are further enhanced by, as far as structural safety is concerned, when they're up there by temporary sort of flying buttresses, as it were. On this particular project, we don't have the room to be able to do that. There's very few, there's little distance between the, the sideline and where the house is, and then the other houses on the other lot.
Would you, would you explain a flying buttress, please?
Yes, it's actually, when you've got a, a house that's to be elevated in a situation like this, it's typically going hydraulically lifted on four, four or more posts that are created, you can imagine, they typically, they unbolt the house from the foundation, and then they then start, they put beams underneath it, they'll knock holes in that foundation in order to be able to lift it up, and then they go inside the foundation if there is one, otherwise they do it on the outside, and they build these pillars very, very slowly so that the house is actually jacked up in increments to get to that point, and that can take hours or almost a day, depending on the size of the house and how high it has to get. Once it gets up to that level, if it's in an area that is not susceptible to winds or other factors that might actually cause it to sway, then there's typically no issue and it's left that way. In many cases, when a house like that, in it, in that condition where it's raised, is actually high enough to be potentially susceptible from a safety perspective to winds that could actually. that could actually alter it, either shift it off of its center, uh, or literally blow it over. I've seen that happen once. Uh, so what happens is they attach, um, temporary, either usually wooden, but sometimes steel buttresses that will actually brace the side of the house and come out at an angle to be able to actually put pillared supports, uh, diagonal supports against that house to prevent that sway from actually happening. Usually, when we're dealing with houses of this course, they're either smaller houses on larger lots where we've got plenty of room to be able to do that, or they're fairly substantial houses, which also, again, has a, a fair amount of property around them, so that, uh, they're either, their size of the house is either not going to make it sway, no matter what the wind conditions are, or it's, again, buttress for safety. In this particular case, the contractor said, I've got no room to do that. I would call your attention to the plan at the back of your packet showing that there's very, very little room on this property. It's under three thousand, the property is under three thousand square feet. The house is obviously a lot smaller than that. Um, so the contractor had said, given the size of, or the, the height that we'd have to go, uh, the danger of putting anybody underneath there, uh, and the timeframes that are involved, meaning we're getting into, if there is a hurricane season, it would typically be the, uh, the autumn in this area. And he just didn't want to go there. So, spoke with Ms. Schistler about that, she's like, now what do I do? Because I've got a house that's already rented for me, for, she wants to be able to build this house to be able to move back into it by the beginning of the season next year, the summer season next year. So, she's already got another house ready to go next month. And this caused a bit of a panic because when her original contractor broke his, had the problem, then, um, the new contractor said, I'd be happy to do it, but here are my conditions in order to be able to make this happen. So, we're instead of now raising the house, or attempting to raise the house, uh, we're going to tear it down and rebuild it. You can see pursuant to the plans that are in your packet, the rebuilding is going to be in the same footprint as the existing house. So, other than the fact that we're literally tearing it down and rebuilding it in the same footprint, there will be no change to the variance that we're, to the house from the variance that was already granted several months ago. Given that, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any comments.
Anything to add, Mr.?
I think we just received a permit by rule on that as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else to add?
Uh, no, other than what I said in my comment, it's basically, I mean, all of the same arguments, all of the same constraints are still in place of the original, uh, approval, um, for the elevation remodel that you approved earlier this year. The only difference is, um, they've come back, um, and just, uh, want to replace the structure, uh, remodel it. The same arguments are in place.
So, but I'd move that the board is comfortable with this, can, to, to accept the previous comments from the previous vote and then attach this, given that there's no major change other than whether it's new or, or existing. Were you comfortable with that?
Is it the exact same footprint?
The only difference to the footprint is one stair tread that goes out into the driveway. That's it. Everything else is the same.
And that's because it's raised up a little bit more?
Yes.
So, can I get a motion on the board for that?
Yes, I move to, that, uh, we accept the, uh, previous findings on the application prior.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion on that piece of the motion? All in favor? Can I ask you, now, just continue with that, based on that assumption?
Good, thank you for your time.
Um, we have one letter on this, any phone calls or anything?
Nope.
Okay. I hope in the public, anybody from the public wish to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public card. This is a letter from Ted and Linda Hall. My property is located at forty-four Bayview. I wish to support the variance requested by Beth Schistler, forty-eight Bayview Avenue, Scarborough. The drawing that Kaplan Thompson, uh, submitted to the zoning board are, as Ms. Schistler described to us, the, the drawings show that the renovated home will maintain the cottage-like appearance of Higgins Beach and the neighboring properties who are supposed to seem to finish homes sincerely. Ted and Linda Hall, and their addresses, forty-eight Bayview Avenue, I think one house away. Uh, two houses away, is that correct? Thank you. Let's go through the, uh, the criteria. Just quickly. Again, this is just for record's sake. Uh, the land in question cannot use a, uh, yield a reasonable return unless the variance is granted. Reasonable return is not the maximum return, et cetera. And we're basically saying that the same applies on each of these, and that's all we'll deal with that if that's okay with you.
That's correct.
Uh, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property. This criterion applies to properties, not people, and in common condition, not shared by the neighborhood. And it's tied to the same. The granted variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
It will not.
And hardship is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner of the property.
Everything, the lot and the house existed long before zoning was enacted.
Uh, that is, that part. So, uh, any comments, questions from the board, or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's Janice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Just remember to invite us to, just remember to invite us to the party. The next appeal is appeal number twenty-five eighty-four, it's a limited reduction of yard size filed by Stephen Martha Hammond, fifty-three Tall Pines Road, assists as map U nine parcel three. I'd like to take a stand, state your name and address, we'll go from there.
Steve Hammond.
Martha Hammond.
Fifty-three Tall Pines Road.
Thank you. Uh, what are you trying to accomplish?
We'd like to, uh, add, um, a small structure on the side of our garage so that we can store, uh, snow removal equipment and that kind of thing. Um, and, uh, because our lot is, um, has three road frontages wrapping around it, uh, we've got a forty-foot setback on all the sides. And, um, so we'd like to get a three and a half foot reduction on one side to build this structure.
Very good. Um, any letters or phone calls on this?
Nope.
And, did you dial in this?
No, it's a, it's a pretty much a straightforward limited reduction of yard size criteria, similar to the one we heard a few minutes ago. Same criteria for review. Um, the house is eligible, uh, due to the age of it, um, so it's the right, it's the right vehicle, I guess, for this request.
Saw the drawing, it looks, looks appropriate, so, why don't we jump right in? Uh, what I'll do is I'll read in the question. If you could answer it best you can, that'd be great, okay? Okay, the existing buildings or structures on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size is requested were erected prior to July third, nineteen ninety-one, or the lot is a vacant, non-conforming lot of record.
Uh, there's a building permit in your packet from nineteen seventy-seven.
Uh, the request reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner of the, or the occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district. Could you expand on the, the comment that you made on that, um, a bit, that would be helpful?
My, um, my garage is just a tad smaller than a normal garage. And in order to keep a snow blower and, and I have no basement in my house, so to keep a table saw in the garage, it means I can't put my car in the garage. So, I'm looking for, for a place to, uh, to store those, those items so I can garage my, my, both of my cars.
Do you know the size of your garage currently, Benji?
It's, um, it's on the plan, it's, uh, twenty-four by twenty-two.
So, the back side is the short side?
It's, it's shallower than.
Shallower than.
Kind of a typical garage.
Okay. Uh, due to the physical features of the lot, of the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with currently applicable yard size requirements.
If I, if I did, um, if I did store my snow blower someplace else, it meant that it wouldn't be adjacent to the driveway. And I'd have to make a path to wherever it is to get it to the driveway to use it.
Uh, the impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from a greater than the impact and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement.
I think it's the, um, last page in your packet, there's, um, six houses of, that are close to my house that all have oversized garages. And, um, I did neglect one, and that's my only a butter, um, has got the same thing on their garage that I'm asking for. Would you mind if I passed out one picture?
Feel free.
This is my only a butter in my backyard. And, uh, what she's got on the side of her garage is substantially what I'm looking for from mine.
Thank you. And you haven't, you haven't commenced, uh, excuse me, commenced construction or enlargement expansion at this point?
That's right.
Sorry, again. Um, let me open the public, anybody wish to speak to this from the public? If you know, I'll close the public card, and then come back to the board for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Now, second. Discussion on the motion.
I would like to say that, uh, I think you've done a great job with the design, making it match what the others look like. And so, it really, it's going to, I think, uh, be a nice addition there.
Thank you. Public discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? That's all, seeing none, it's, thank you very much. Have a nice day. Hopefully, we won't have to use that snow blower this year. We can, El Nino's our best friend.
Thank you for that.
That's a snow bloat.
Snow blower. Okay, and the next appeal, this is appeal number twenty-five eighty-three. It's a special exception permit application request by Christopher Griffith, two-ten Payne Road, assists as map R forty-one parcel ten. And Mr. and Mrs. Hammond, you don't, you don't have to stay, be polite. Some people do that. Go home. Have a good night. You're off on Tuesday, but. Okay, hi, if you could state your name and.
Hi, Chris Griffith, two-ten Payne Road.
Okay.
Scarborough.
And, uh, Mr. Griffith, could you explain what you'd like to accomplish, we'll go from there.
Um, I would like to get permitted, um, for a home occupation for the purpose of operating an art gallery and a real estate office, normal business hours and by appointment.
Very good. Um, any comments?
Um, no, the only comment that I really have is that it's, it's a little unusual to have two separate kind of uses in a home occupation, but I don't see anything in the ordinance that prohibits that. I mean, you could certainly have a, a combination of, uh, home occupation uses as long as one is in an auto body repair shop, which is prohibited. I think you'd probably do it, it's unusual, but I, uh.
No reason.
I don't know if the board has any questions regarding that, but I, I looked in the ordinance, I see no prohibition on it.
I think the easier I was going to suggest that we divide the question, uh, if the board's comfortable with that. And that way, we can take them separately, uh, under the same appeal, but that way, we're not dealing with two scattered points at the same time. Anybody comfortable with that? Okay, so I'm going to divide the question for a second? A second on dividing the question? Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Who's second, Benji?
Uh, Mr. Stark.
Before you start, Mr. Chairman, I should add too, um, that Mr. Griffith had an in-home office permit prior to this, which he, uh, put a copy in his packet, um, and he came in on his own accord and said he wasn't sure that what he was doing now was in keeping with the in-home office. So, he's actually going to the next step in the progression, which is getting special exception home occupation permits.
And his previous one was?
I'll let him explain that.
Great, feel free. If you'd like to explain what your previous, uh, home occupation was.
Sure. Um, and I think it was, I bought the home in August of two thousand and two days after, applied for an in-home office permit and was granted it. I did recruiting, just on the telephone and on the computer, and recruited for main companies. And over the years, um, it became automated. And it was, you know, like a travel agency, the recruiting business went away. So, I studied for a real estate license and, well, I did, I ha-, I've had the, um, in-home office permit for sixteen years. And then I went and, uh, got my real estate license and worked for a big firm. And once you have, you know, you, you earn enough time and you get enough credentials, you can go off on your own. Um, so I did real estate out of my house. And I realized that when a client comes to my house to park their car and we go off looking for stuff, I was breaking the in-home office, uh, requirements that no clients can come to my house. So, that's pretty much what started all of this was, I, it's ninety-nine point nine percent of the real estate business is done on the phone and on the computer. And it's a very rare occasion that somebody will drop off paperwork, because most of that's docu-signed electronically. But, um, they'll be driving by and they'll want to drop something off or pick something up or park a car, we meet at my house and go off and look at properties. But that was not in compliance with the in-home office. And that's when I started the process and came downtown and got the paperwork and saw what was involved in it.
Uh, it's impressive, actually. And obviously, you did put your time and got your credentials, because most people wouldn't have noticed or cared. Okay, uh, so let's jump right into the, uh, special exception. And this is strictly on part of the real estate, uh, office. And I think we need to define it in a second section, but we'll get to that. The proposed use will not create unsanitary, uh, unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reasons of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. If you'd like to just read into the record what you've already said.
Okay, and I'll just read in the real estate component of it at this time.
Thank you.
Um, I anticipate two to four, or in this case, maybe one to two, real estate clients a week slash month. It will be very minimal. Um, oh, no, wait a minute, I'm on the wrong question, I'm sorry. Um, the house, my house is served by a three-bedroom septic system and any occupant load generated by this real estate home occupation would be minimal at best. And, um, due to the fact that I anticipate one to two real estate, uh, clients per week, um, the design flow by this type of home occupation is incidental and negligible. There would also be no unsanitary or unhealthful conditions regarding emissions into the air or water either.
And the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Okay. Um, I anticipate, I'm going to say one to two, real estate clients per week or slash month, very minimal. The current parking space can easily accommodate, um, these retail clients, uh, these real estate clients, um, when they come over. I have a very large, uh, parking area. I have two curb cuts out onto the Payne Road, so there's plenty of place to park, to turn around. No one would ever have to back out onto the Payne Road.
Very good. And. Proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree municipal fire or police protection. or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection in existing uses in the neighborhood.
The proposed use will not create any public safety problems and therefore not create or require a greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than what currently exists.
And the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on the water supplies?
No, the, um, there is absolutely no effect on sedimentation, erosion, or water supplies.
And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
No changes in any structures at two-ten Payne Road.
And you're not in a shoreline zone?
No.
And then we'll jump into the, uh, section for home occupation.
Did you wanna finish?
I'm sorry, did I miss something? Are the applicants, do you own the property?
I do.
You mentioned earlier you own the property. And you have the technical and financial ability to meet any of the standards, right?
I do.
And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation?
I agree.
Assuming it's just standard.
Yeah. One or two people maybe a week on, on the real estate, and if that, um, no impact.
Okay, and we'll jump over to home occupation standards. Uh, the occupation, the occupation, occupation or profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal building and within buildings accessory thereto.
Yes.
In case it'll be in the, on the first section from the main house, correct?
Yes.
The home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes.
Yes.
No more than one person who is a resident of the dwelling shall be employed in the home occupation?
Just me. Now, but that's all I, just me, yes.
It would allow one more person.
Right.
Uh, are you looking for signage?
Probably.
Okay, you can, uh, be allowed a two-by-three signage.
Right, six square feet.
Um, and it would need to meet the sign regulations, which.
Which, I, I already have my application.
Uh, there should be no exterior display, no, uh, exterior storage of materials and other exterior indication of a home occupation or variance, I'm sorry, variation from the residential character of the principal building, except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of the ordinance.
Correct, no outside storage.
Uh, no nuisance shall be generated, including not limited to offensive noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare.
Not at all.
And the traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a, the traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood.
Not at all.
And in addition to off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirement of the dwelling adequate, off-street parking shall be provided.
Yes, adequate is, is there.
And, um, it's not using any more than twenty percent of the dwelling unit. I'm, I'm assuming you're just using your kitchen table, or you have, you have an office that you're?
Yeah, that in-home office. It's, um, ten point two percent of the finished space in the house.
And, uh, ten finished attic and bases, let's see, it's not, hold on. Home occupations may include retail sales subject to the following limitations, we'll come back to that. Fisherman, lobsterman, shellfish, nothing there, motor vehicle repairs, nothing there. Open up, any letters or comments on this?
No, it's not.
I'll open the public hearing, nobody's here, but I'll open the public hearing to anybody that would like to speak to it. Nobody's running in, so I'll close the public hearing part of this meeting, come back to the board for questions, comments, uh, or motion on the first, um, part of this question.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor? That's unanimous. So let's take the second part of this motion.
Thank you.
So this is on the real estate part?
That was on the real estate part. Now then we'll go on to the, uh, the other. Which basically we're gonna go back right over the same thing.
Right, I got it now.
And did you understand what I did by, by breaking that in two?
Yes.
So the next part is, uh, the, well, let's use your own words. What are you trying to accomplish on the second part of the approving?
Well, I guess the words would, would be an art gallery, um, a home occupation for the purpose of operating an, an art gallery during normal business hours and by appointment. I've been flying for almost thirty-five years, uh, and I take aerial photographs, uh, out of the plane, I, to cash flow the plane. I, uh, take a lot of construction progress, a lot of site selection for the commercial aspects. And while I'm up there, it's really pretty, and I take pictures. And then I sell those pictures on the beach, four or five art shows, Old Orchard, down to Agonquit during the summer. I didn't even think about the retail aspect until I started to read the application and saw there's a retail component. And I thought, um, what a great opportunity to see if, um, I could sell some artwork when I'm there. It wouldn't be all the time, because I do work. Um, so I, I thought I would also apply for retail sales in my accessory building. I have a big, I have two, two garages, one's attached to the house and one is not. And I would just take the show ten-by-ten tent that you set up at these art shows and just set it up inside one bay of the garage when I'm there, and open up one door and see what happens. I mean, Payne Road in the summertime is, uh, a busy place. You know, it's, I don't think it's an unsafe place, it's a, it's a busy place. And everybody's putting up the road to go to the beach, and I thought maybe I would see how, how that would work, and I'd like to do that.
I'd like to do, start on the performance standards of the home occupation first and then go back to the others, if that's okay with the board. And, uh, gonna throw a curve at you, but I want, I wanna get that section that you're talking about on the record first. Uh, the occupation of profession shall be carried out wholly within the principal building or within the building accessory thereto.
Correct.
And that would be in the garage bay.
Correct.
And would be year-round or just seasonal?
Well, I'd, I'd like to go for year-round, because, um, I do get some people in the, in Christmas time. It's always a busy time, people call on the phone, and that's another, well, we'll go through your questions and then I'll.
Uh, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes.
Yes.
And no more than one person resident of the dwelling shall, uh, be employed in the home occupation.
Correct, just myself.
Okay, and, just to clarify that, that even though, because we, we divided the question, but that would apply one person would be?
For both.
For both, yeah, you couldn't have one, you couldn't have one for one and one for another, okay?
Totally agree.
Uh, exterior signage shall be permitted with accordance to the home occupation, that would again be the same thing, that six-foot square sign could only be, uh, it would need to include both items.
Right.
You couldn't have two separate six-foot signs.
Well, what I was, I could, can I ask you questions about sign now or later?
Well, you can ask anytime you'd like.
Well, I, I was thinking about that, and, you know, during the peak summer months, maybe I put up just an aerial photo sign, and then when the season goes back to normal in town, I put up the real estate sign. I'd have to apply for two sign permits. Do you know what I mean?
Would there be no way to combine the two businesses onto one sign, realtor and aerial photographerist? I mean, it would be kinda neater and cleaner to do it that way. I understand what you're saying. But yeah, you'd only be allowed one sign, could you rotate those, could you have permission for the verbiage of two different signs and rotate them in and out as you need to for your season, I think is your question.
Right, and with the permission of, of the code office, obviously. I mean, and then I was reading where I have to have the two-ten Payne Road, the address on there, and when you put all this on there, it eats, you know, I mean, it's six square feet. So that.
There's, there's always the business districts.
I know, I know, and if it works, believe me, I'll be in the business district.
It's a fair question, and I, I've never actually had that come up. So, um, I, I suppose one way to approach it would be for the board to place that condition on the special exception permit, that two signs may be used but only one at a time, two different, two distinct, distinctly different signs, one for each business but only used one at a time, in, in the same, would you put them in the same place?
Absolutely, yeah.
So like a, a, a yardarm type sign maybe on the front lawn?
Yeah, yeah, right.
And just interchange the signs as, as you need to.
Any board members have a problem with that? I, I certainly don't.
Yeah, does that sound fair? I, I, it's a new one for me, so I'm, we're treading new ground here.
I don't think this is unreasonable.
Thank you.
Okay.
Or you could put one business on one side and the other one on the other.
Or get an electronic reader board and have it rotate.
And, and put another sign in my neighbor's driveway that says.
We're getting into dangerous territory.
Yeah. Sorry. You know, a mixture of, uh, one sign for one, one sign for the other, and maybe I'll, I'll get my sign guy to make one for both of them, so, you know, but never more than one at a time, never more than six square feet.
As long as they're approved by the code enforcement, I'm fine with that. Uh, the, uh, there should be no exterior display nor exterior storage of materials, so you wouldn't be hanging pictures on the wall outside the building.
Nothing outside.
Uh, no nuisance shall be generated by, uh, but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, uh, vibration, smoke, dust, odors.
Nothing, no.
Traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the neighborhood. That would be in combination to the board's thought with the other approval that we just granted, so, when you take that into consideration.
Yeah, I was, I was anticipating, you know, if, let's say I got four retail customers on a Saturday or something like that. You know, I have parking at least for six cars besides my own personal cars. And again, there's two curb cuts to the Payne Road, I don't see it impairing traffic whatsoever. It's a, you know, he's got, that's the size of the parking area. It's on a part of the Payne Road where it, the, the sightlines are straight, it's, it's not turned at all.
I, I looked at it, it looked like the ideal situation, you got a good time, I didn't see any problem with that, but we'll see where it goes. Uh, traffic generated by such home occupation shall, I'm sorry, just read that one. In addition to off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirement of the dwelling adequate, off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee and the vehicles of the maximum number of users or customers. Occupation may attract during peak operating hours. You probably answered that already?
Yes, plenty of parking.
Uh, so in combination with the first section, which would be the, the ten percent you had mentioned, uh, not more than twenty percent of the dwelling unit, uh, floor area provided that, the purposes for this calculation, unfinished basement attic spaces are not included. And so you're talking about half a garage bay?
Um, yeah, the, the total, it's a twenty-two by thirty-foot garage, so six hundred and sixty square feet. And I said ten by twelve, so if somebody goes outside the ten-by-ten tent, and that's only eighteen percent of the garage.
And do those numbers drive?
The limitations for retail sales, I think, is four hundred and forty.
Right, okay, yeah, actually it comes down a little bit further, so you'd need to limit that to four hundred square feet, which would be a little bit less than that.
Than the six sixty, yeah, yeah.
He's only talking about a hundred and twenty retail.
In the whole garage.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, home occupation may include retail sales subject to the following limitations, the total square feet is limited to four hundred square feet, sale price is limited to products and articles produced, assembled, or processed on the premises, uh, and seafood caught, blah, and on and on. And I would argue that photography would meet that standard, unless anybody has a problem with that, but.
I'd like to ask one question about that.
Yes.
You said art gallery, are you referring to your photographs?
Yes.
Not selling anybody else's, right?
No, no.
And everything, and everything you will be selling, you will be putting together in your home?
Yes, and nobody else's. I brought some examples, if you wanna see them. But this DBA of my company is called Great Moose Aerial Art, so I figured art gallery, you know.
Wouldn't mind seeing the picture if you had one.
Bring them up to you.
Sure, not that it matters, but, you know, from.
I brought you one.
Flying point of view, but.
Picture for each of us? Depends, you didn't vote yet. They're gonna take them to each and that one time's going.
That's cool.
Just kidding, microphones are real.
Thanks, you were a nice word with that, too. I'm actually a pilot, too, so I, I know what you're talking about.
Oh, cool.
What do you fly?
I, I have a Luscombe.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
I putt around in a Luscombe. Quite the conversation piece.
Yeah, nineteen forty.
It's a two thousand nine. Great story sidebar on that one.
Interesting after.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so that comes back to the, uh, special exception. And the proposed use will not create unsafe or unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Yeah, it's in the garage and, um, you know, not in the house, so there won't be any load on the septic system, you know, or air, water, any of that.
Proposed use will not, uh, create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity?
No.
And a lot of these repeat.
Yeah.
Uh, the proposed use will be, will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection.
No additional public safety, you know, um, resources are required.
And proposed, proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
No changes on any structure at all.
And you're not in the shoreline zone, uh, you own property, and you have the financial ability to, to meet any requirements. And compatible with the existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation.
Yeah, you know, normal, uh, hours of operation by appointment only, plenty of parking space, um, talk to all the neighbors, they all wished me good luck and, you know, had no problems.
Thank you.
By appointment only, can you elaborate on that? Are you talking ten o'clock at night, eleven o'clock at night, are you talking?
No, we, you know, like, in the summertime, when it's light out, maybe seven, but maybe not, maybe six, you know what I mean? Um, but no, no ten or eleven o'clock, you know, just normal Saturday aft- afternoons, Saturday mornings. But I'd say seven, do you, do you stipulate by time?
I don't think there's any reason to in something as small as this personally, but.
And, and you, you mentioned that you want to use this year-round, do you have a heat system in your garage?
I do. The garage is, is, is actually finished, so it's a nice little workshop and, and it is heated.
I have a question, do you print the, do you print the photos digitally?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not like you have a, you have a darkroom and, uh, mixing with chemicals and the?
No, no, not anymore. No, it's all digital.
Great.
Other questions, comments, or a motion?
To approve, uh, second question.
It's proven in second, and discussion on the motion. Seeing none, it's just, just to clarify that, um, it's, even though we broke the question in two, it fits as one. One sign, but you can rotate it out, uh, as long as it's approved by the code enforcement office. And one employee would be the max for.
Combination.
I did like Mr. Long's test comment about a reversible sign. Never know, they might be able to do it better for you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, now that you've given me the flexibility, I can put Black Bear Sign Works to work and.
Tell Bo I said hi. Okay, so, um, all in favor? That's unanimous. Have a great day.
Thank you very much.
Where do you keep the plane?
Bitterford.
Mark is gonna take your phone. He's got a plane, he's got a boat, he's out there.
Good luck. Can you sign this?
Next appeal's twenty-five eighty-five, it's a variance appeal by Charles and Eliza, is it Eliza Lee? Forty-seven Winslow Homer Road, assesses map U nineteen, parcel forty-two. And if you could state your name and, uh, trying to accomplish, we'll go from there.
Sure, my name's Trevor Watson, I'm acting as the owner's agent for Charlie and Eliza Lee uh, in this, um, practical difficulty variance application.
Okay, I just, uh, to me, there's a mental shift there, that's why.
It hurts the ears, Chris.
First and foremost, Karen, are you okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I was getting worried about you.
Yeah.
She actually told us we had to, to, uh, filibuster.
Totally unprepared, I thought I had more time.
And I did too, Trevor. It totally caught me off guard. I'm not doing that again.
So why don't you go ahead and explain what you'd like to accomplish, and we'll go from there.
Absolutely, so we are, uh, 47 Winslow Homer Road is a non-conforming lot of record, uh, it does not meet minimum square footage requirements. Uh, additionally, the existing structure exists burdening the side yard and front yard setback as well as, and abutters property. Um, existing structures, uh, overlap the, the property lines. So, we are asking that the, um, we are approved to tear down all existing structures and reduce the front yard setback by 12 feet to unburden the side yard, uh, and the abutters properties, and focus the burden on the front yard setback, which, based on the unique interaction between the travel way and the existing road width requirements, uh, it's a unique situation that can handle this 12-foot reduction in the front yard setback.
Okay. So this entire building will come down, basically?
Yes, all, all structures on property will come down, and we would, we're proposing to rebuild a similar sized structure, uh, 2,800 square feet versus, uh, 2,700 square feet, uh, more centered on the property, uh, while still burdening the front yard setback with this 12-foot reduction. The, um, the goal is to make a non-conforming property less non-conforming, while also continuing to respect, uh, privacy, which currently exists between all the neighbors, because as you all know, um, properties in this area don't all necessarily conform to modern zoning because they were, you know, the, the properties were, uh, created, uh, such a long time ago. Um, so maintaining privacy, the expectation of privacy, the existing yard, uh, grass yard, and the existing mature trees, which are completely reasonable to expect, uh, to have in, in a residential zone such as this, and basically because the road is 14 feet wide versus the modern zoning requirement of 66 feet, and how that relationship exists, uh, we would, we would ask for 12 feet to burden that, um, maintaining a, you know, plus or minus a 50-foot perceived front yard setback, um, but unburden everything else.
Okay, thank you. Um, setback, the current setbacks on this property, how does that lay out? Can it sit, is there an envelope here big enough to?
Yeah, so the, the dark, the dark hashed zones, uh, right here and here, uh, which I don't have a pointer, but thi- this is the existing structure, which is burdening the neighbor's property, uh, crossing the property line as well as existing in the side yard setback, and this portion, which is burdening the front yard setback, existing within the front yard setback. Uh, and then we would propose to, uh, sort of reposition a new structure within, within the legal building envelope, so no longer burdening the neighbor, uh, maintaining the, the privacy and the, the lawn, which you can see in the arrow photograph, as well as the mature trees, and then just burdening, slightly increasing the, uh, the existing burden to the front yard setback.
So you're, you're basically kicking it over to the, to the right and sort of squaring it off to the road?
Yeah, we're, we're more squaring it off, there, there's an existing wing, which is this portion here, the rest of it, we're just kind of rotating the structure. So we're try, we're, we're trying to maintain the existing impact.
Is this on septic or on a sewer?
It's on a sewer.
And number of bedrooms that are currently there now, how many?
Uh, there's four bedrooms now, which will remain.
And the proposed use score also on?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just jump right into the, uh. You don't have to read all this in, but we'll, um.
So I think I've, I think I've described the project?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the exact maintenance requirement would be a 12-foot reduction in the front yard setback from, uh, 40 feet to 28 feet.
Anything to add to this, um?
Um, nothing in addition to my, my comments, again, I think that, I think the focus here is going to be on number four, uh, regarding feasible, no feasible alternatives. Um, the question was asked and answered, is there a billable envelope? There is. Rest of.
So the purpose of the photographs is to show that although I do not have a structural engineer's review, uh, I, I think it's, um, easy to ascertain that this is basically a seasonal camp that's existed for many years with deferred maintenance. It was never built for year-round consideration, it was never built to today's modern construction practices. Uh, the size of the members is undersized, the spacing of the members is exceeding, uh, traditional, you know, 16-inch on center spacing, and additionally, uh, although the photographs don't show it, the majority of the structure, uh, first and second floor with the exclusion of the attic, is finished, over time, they basically just finished the walls, and so, uh, any attempt to work within the existing structure would require the removal of existing finishes to then understand exactly what's going on, although we can assume that it's undersized. Uh, we then determine that the structure is undersized, and we have to deal with it, so it's, it's basically removing existing finish to then rebuild the structure, to then reapply, uh, modern finishes. So, it becomes cumbersome, it becomes onerous, it becomes, uh, financially unfeasible versus, you, you know, versus, uh, basically just raising the entire structure to, uh, start fresh.
So, uh, the existing buildings and structure of the lot, uh, for limited reduction of yard sizes, we custom, read section, I'm sorry, I'm not. On the page here, am I on?
Is that, um, that big club that we see right behind the, the existing house, is that a single tree or is that multiple?
That's a single, uh, fully mature tree. It's like an elm or an oak or something along those lines, not an arborist, so I apologize.
Okay, and it's, the structure can't be moved back any closer to that, or is it just can't be moved back far enough to, to?
It can't be moved back far enough. I mean, the, the argument is, yes, that, well, the, my argument is that it cannot be moved without significantly impacting the expectation of privacy to the abutters, which exist right here. I don't have a survey, but I, they are existing, uh, th- those structures exist very close to the property line, uh, although I don't have a, a survey of their property, so I'm not going to speak to that, but, um, uh, it cannot be moved without maintaining the, the privacy, the yard, and the mature trees, which everybody is sort of respectful of, uh, at the time of purchase. Um, so if we want to discuss rebuilding a structure within legal envelope, we're going to have to have a conversation about a reduction in privacy, a reduction in yard size, and a reduction in mature trees, trees, which, um, is completely, uh, it's expected and completely reasonable to expect those to exist in this type of residential area, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, that's, I, I'm not, my question is more that, can you move that structure back a little bit further, even, even, even though you may not be able to keep, put the entire structure within the envelope and still maintain the, the large trees?
We could move it back and trim the large trees, yes. But we, I mean, if we move it back to 12 feet, we would probably have to remove the large trees, certainly.
I'm a little bit concerned because we don't have, uh, one of the requirements, which is a, a plot plan of some type.
Yeah, you got it right there.
Where is it?
The first page. It's the site plan right here. What have you done, right there? That is the site plan.
Um, I guess I'm confused as to why that can't sit on the, I get the concept, I guess I'm not confident of the reality. I'm trying to imagine that turning and why it, is this, is there a dash line there? Is it the dash line on this picture intentional? Is that, is there a dashed line right there that I'm?
Yeah.
That's the building window. That, that's the building window.
Okay, that helps. Okay, so by turning it and then adding 12 feet, that makes more sense to me. If the board's looking at the picture right beside the drawing, actually gives you a better perspective than I think the drawing does. If you turn that building parallel, is it running per, uh, parallel with the, it looks like it's going to be running parallel or going close to parallel with, uh, the setback, uh, with the, uh, front setback, is that correct?
Yes, the, the front of the building will be, uh, the proposed is to have the front of the building parallel with the front yard setback.
And is the footprint the same size as the current footprint?
Uh, plus or minus, we're talking about, uh, 2,700 square feet total building versus 2,800 square feet, so yes.
What about the footprint?
Yes, it's, for all intents and purposes, uh, I believe the existing footprint is plus or minus, uh, 1,400 square feet, and the proposed footprint is plus or minus, uh, 1,600 square feet. So it's, it's, it is a slight increase in footprint, uh, however, the existing structure is more a full two-story structure, where the proposed structure is more in keeping with the neighborhood, where the second story exists within roof lines, so by that, by the very nature of that, it's going to be a slight reduction in, uh, it's going to be an increase in first floor and a, and a reduction in second floor footprint.
And the, the, it's probably right here, but it leaves you for me to ask, the current depth of the prop, the unit itself versus the new depth of the, the new property, do you know what that is offhand?
Uh, I'm sorry, do you mean the, sort of the encroachment into the front yard setback?
No, I mean, the, uh, if you're looking at the building, uh, from, from the main rows there.
Oh, yeah, it, it doesn't show it, but we are, the, this proposed depth, this proposed, um.
Yeah, from the.
Intrusion into the legal building envelope is, uh, plus or minus the same.
So it's, it's, uh, I guess I'm still trying to, what I'm trying to try and imagine is, I'm trying to take the new piece and set it in this picture, uh, to justify, I'm trying to justify your argument.
Right, so.
Which is that the trees, that there's enough of a reason.
Right, so then the, the existing, I mean, this is not, I mean, I can draw it.
That's okay, no, you just, uh, I think I understand what you're talking about.
I mean, it's, it's about this corner here is about the same, uh, versus the existing. So this, this area, this area here, I mean, we, we've got a, we've got a slight overage here, but closer to the tree, we're maintaining at proximity. Is that, is that your question?
I think so, and maybe you can help me, um, so, where is the, the side envelope here? Is that, is this? Building, where is the building envelope specifically?
Okay, yeah, you can really see that one right there.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, I got that quick.
Actually easier to see it, but here's.
Uh, the rear envelope is, okay, thank you. So, so from a practical point of view, you could go back relatively easily, but the cost of that would be loss of habitat, loss of trees?
Exactly, the, the cost of that would be, uh, closer proximity to the abutters, to the rear, uh, loss of tree, loss of mature trees. The only reason why I mention mature, mature trees is because it speaks to privacy and an expectation of, and then a loss of lawn.
Thank you.
Is, is the front of the property sloped down?
Yes.
Towards the road?
Yeah, uh, it's a significant slope, and, uh, quite frankly, I'm not sure if we'll be, we'll, we'll actually be able to achieve the 12-foot that I'm asking for. Uh, we don't know exactly, so I went with the absolute maximum, which I felt, uh, as a possibility, um, but yes, there, you can see from these grade lines, there's a significant, uh, it, it's basically a ledge drop-off. Um, and that, that's sort of another argument, the people on the, the travel way will be lower looking up, and so if we're talking about, I, I, I believe that the existing encroachment's about seven feet, seven or eight feet, we're asking for 12 feet, I don't believe that there'll be any perceivable change in encroachment, uh, if we're talking about plus or minus five feet from the people on the travel way down looking up.
Trevor, just for point of clarity, on, on this view here, uh, the street, the road is, uh, toward the bottom of the, the drawing?
That's correct.
That's the orientation?
Yes.
For the front.
Yeah, and it's, it's a.
The front porch facing the road.
It's a front porch too, you know, the goal is to soften the structure. If we look at, um, if we look at the existing photographs, uh, you know, we can see, uh, an elevated first floor, a solid first floor, a solid second floor. This is quite imposing to look at, it's almost as if you were in a city, you know, walking down a street with very high facades on either end. Our goal is to soften that with, uh, bringing the roof lines down and, and making it, you know, a front porch, and so it's sort of a, uh, um, the, the, the language escapes me, I'm sorry, but, but a, but a, a natural progression sort of into a structure, rather, which is more in keeping with the, with the neighborhood versus a, a, a one and a half, two-story facade that's sort of in opposition to you.
So, continue with, uh, the questions here. Uh, so neither variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property, not the general conditions in the neighborhood, and you've answered that, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of abutting properties.
No, I think it'll, I think it'll actually, I mean, I, I can't speak to it, so I'll say no, it will not, uh, but, um, the intent will be that it's favorable as we'll be removing structures from abutting properties, we'll be reducing encroachments into side yard setbacks, and we're going to be fo, we're, the goal is to focus the burden on the front yard setback, which because, as I stated earlier, of the unique circumstances between the travel way and the current road width requirements can handle this encroachment.
And the, uh, practical difficulty is not a result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner, um, that's, I.
No, this house has existed for 100 years and, um, uh, it, you know, it predates modern zoning, so, no.
And the question that Mr. Long said was bringing up, is no other feasible alternatives available to the applicant except the variance, that statement would be true in order to do what you're trying to accomplish?
Yes, unless we want to decrease. Unless we want to decrease, unless we want to decrease conditions which existed at the time of the purchase of the property, unless we want to decrease the privacy, the perception of privacy to the abutters, unless we want to decrease the number of modern, mature trees that exist on the property, unless we want to decrease the, the yard which existed, which I contend are all reasonable expectations of a property such as this, then there's no reasonable alternative.
And the granting of variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties?
Yes, more nearly certainly. The, the argument is to reduce the encroachments on multiple setbacks and focus them on one setback, which because of a unique relationship can, can better handle that encroachment.
And the granting of variance will not have an adverse effect on the natural environment? I think it's obvious you're trying to protect that.
Yes.
Are you not in the shoreline zone?
Uh, no.
And that should cover those items. I can't remember if we had any letters on this.
We did not.
Opened public hearing on this? Yeah, cool, public hearing on this, let's see anybody running in. Come back to the board for questions, comments, or any motion.
So basically, you're looking, by what you're telling us from what I'm hearing is you're looking to protect the abutters' privacy and, and give them the right to have privacy by, by doing what you're doing. You can clearly build within the lot, but you're doing that to try to appease everybody around you.
That's correct. We're at a disadvantage because this, this, this lot is about 13,000 square feet, where the minimum requirement for this zone is 20,000 square feet. So we're at a 7,000 square foot deficiency. So if we want to, if we want to allow to exist everything which is reasonably expected and existed at the time of purchase in that privacy, mature trees, and lawn, then yes, we need the variance to rebuild the house, burdening the front yard setback.
And have you talked to any of the abutters about if you had to go and remove trees or anything? Have you had any, any of those conversations?
We have had those conversations, although it's, you know, apparently we don't have any comments on record, so I'm, I don't, I can tell you that we did speak to the abutters, but I, I don't want to speak for them, if that makes any sense.
Well, I'd just like to know if it was, if, you can't say for them, but if your opinion was that you felt that it was.
My opinion is that they are in favor of it.
Leaving the trees.
Leaving the trees, because these structures exist so close to the rear yard setback. So any, any, any.
So that's why you're just trying to come out of the building envelope, even though there is one?
Exactly. We're trying, we're trying to unburden the neighbor, you know, get the, get the structure off his land, get the structure out of his setback, keep structures out of their setback, keep structures out of their setback. Because the road is only 14 feet wide, and the road width requirement is 66 feet, and because of the natural topography of the land, we have, you know, we'd like to burden, unfortunately, we have to burden someone, so let's burden the front yard setback.
I'm fine with that.
Now, is that, is that a private road? That is a private road, isn't it?
It's a private road, but be, be, I, I don't know, but I know it's a private road, I don't know the following. Because they enjoy city services, they are required to conform to certain, to have certain requirements, I believe. Maybe Brian can speak better to that.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
Was the road a private road?
Yes, it's private.
And because of the, the reason they have to apply, the reason why these apply, because private roads are treated just like regular roads? So the reason why it's, whether it's private or not, it still has to meet the same setback?
They still have the same setbacks.
Right.
And just speaking to that, I forgot about this part, because we were so, I was so rushed in getting here, but the, the lot is 35% smaller than required of 7,000 square feet. What we're asking for, the 12-foot reduction in the front yard setback in terms of, in terms of if, if we added 12 feet to this front yard property line across the whole width, would be about 1,200 square feet to the overall property, and it would add about 800 square feet, this 12-foot by, you know, whatever the, the legal building envelope adds about 800 square feet. So we're, we're not even asking for half of the 7,000 square foot deficiency, we're asking more in the nature of, you know, one quarter to, to, to one-fifth of that.
If it's de minimis, what you're trying to get at is it's de minimis?
Yes, yeah.
Have you explored other building designs that would maybe be a little bit wider and not quite as deep? Give them the same squarish footage without, and get, that'll allow them to push back and be within the envelope?
The, uh, no, we haven't. I wish I was a little more untrustworthy, but no, we haven't. We haven't explored that. The, the real issue is that, you know, and, and this is, this does not, this doesn't, this has no, this is not, this existed at the time of purchase, so I can't really speak to it. However, the tree, the, the trees that exist, that they have no control over, the, the sunniest part of the land is sort of in this region here, you can see it here.
Sure.
And so they would very much like a patio there, so we, we didn't explore options of a wider, shallower structure because we want to, you know, I mean, it's going to be a year-round house, but the reality is it's going to be a three-season house, and as such, they'd really very much like to enjoy outside space.
Hey, the honesty is refreshing.
I hope, I hope so.
Just, um, the way that the proposed house sits on the lot, the, the new structure, how much room is, is, is there between the side of the house and, and the setback, the legal setback?
Are we talking about this side?
Yes.
There's 15 to 20 feet, which currently exists. I mean, that was the real goal, focus, I mean, the, you know, the, the house was built here for a reason, and let's not sort of do that in, a disservice by completely reinventing the wheel. And maybe, maybe that was the wrong approach, but this is where it's existed, this is where the homeowner's comfortable with existing. It's a lot easy to, it's very easy to understand, the sunlight comes in this direction in the morning, the sunlight comes in this direction in the evening, you know, let's not mess with what they know.
I, I think that one of the things that I, I'm struggling with here is that is number four, is there no other feasible alternative that's available to the applicant except this particular variance? I'm trying to understand why there's no possible way that you could restructure the building and still get the square footage and get everything that they want and be within the envelope?
Sure, that's completely reasonable, but however, there's also a, and I, I by no means mean to, there's also a condition, which is that the, the, I believe there's a condition that the house will exist sort of in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. And the rest of the neighborhood enjoy, you know, we can see from this, the, you know, the rest of the neighborhood, they enjoy skinny longhouses. You know, there's, there's a certain vernacular and aesthetic which exists in the neighborhood, which we don't really want to buck. And there are reasonable expectations you have when you purchase a property to, you know, a sunny lawn exists. And Brian can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the state has said that upon review, that's a little bit onerous to expect a homeowner to purchase a property and say, well, this structure exists outside of the building envelope, I'm going to have to deal with it if I want to do any major renovations to this. So I don't disagree with you, however, I think that there are realities which exist in, in, you know, in a practical nature.
One of the things we really don't look at, and I mean, it's great that you're talking about the sunlight and use of that, but if it can fit, that's really not, really not something we can consider as far as a, a rule of making decisions. We need to look at it and see if it fits. I mean, if, if they don't have the sunlight they want, that doesn't necessarily.
However, the, the following condition is that the, the granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties, is all, is all respectfully would say to that.
But my kind of take on this is we're, we're, we're solving two problems, and de minimis, de minimis, de minimis, help!
Minimizing?
Minimizing, we're, we're still having a de minimis effect on, on that strip. If you look at the picture again, normally, you know, it's a unique piece of property, it's a unique part of the world, I don't know what views are taken away or not taken away by moving it into different locations. I don't even believe this house has views.
No, there are no views.
But I don't know about the people up and back, not that that's relevant, but obviously nobody's complaining, so that says something. My, my argument when I look at the picture. Get it away, Brian. Do you have the one that has the, yeah, that's the one there? The one, okay. If you look at the, the, in essence, the triangle that's cutting into the area, the impact is relatively mild, relatively speaking, and it's also, it's a porch, and I know this is reaching, but it's coming. One of the arguments in the Higgins Beach area was that we don't count the porches in that, if I remember correctly, in the setbacks, is that right?
In the Higgins Beach code, the porches are allowed to approach into the setback.
Now, that's not the case in this area.
That's true.
But it is on record that we are looking at other areas. More in Pine Point than.
With all due respect, you're reaching.
I think you're bringing up a good point. I think you're bringing up, up an excellent point. I think Pine Point and Proud Snack are the next two areas that they're going to take a look at to change the, the zoning regulations.
Uh, with all due respect, Proud Snack will probably never be looked at. Pine Point maybe, but probably not. There's not enough, there's not enough cohesiveness in the, the structural designs in Proud Snack. There are some, the long skinny houses, maybe you can make an argument for that, but they're all very unique structures. I think you'd have to admit that, correct?
I'd admit that they're all unique structures in virtually every one I come before you on.
And you get the most, unikest of the bunch, but, but no, I mean, I, I, I get what you're saying and everything, but I would not, I would, I would be reticent if I didn't warn the board that that's probably not an applicable argument here in Proud Snack, as it, it's, it's a point to raise, but it's not applicable to Proud Snack because that zoning doesn't exist here, and it probably will never exist here.
Fair enough.
But I mean, the argument could be made that it's a non-conforming lot on record, which does not meet minimum.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, all of those things are finding, those are actually findings of fact, that the, the lot is non-conforming with regard to size, and I think that's where, where the board really needs to go, is back to the findings of fact and conclusions of law. So what are the facts? You know, focus on that, and then from those facts, draw your conclusions of law that would support your decision, whatever that may be. But I think by saying, well, Higgins Beach has this, that's, that's not.
That's like saying that, uh.
You know, well, New York might have that too, does that, I mean, what does that mean to this?
I have this impression that they're going to be changing.
Yeah, but even if they were, it's not there now.
That is true, but we talked about that in Higgins Beach issues, we actually behaved in that, in that manner when we looked at.
Well, yes, we, we considered that, but that was when we were, we were literally in the process of changes.
And if it's on the case, if that's on the table, I, you know, I respect that, so it's good to know.
Yeah, that's all I'd say.
Um.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the, the appeal as presented.
No, second for discussion. Uh, so on discussion, it's just on the table for discussion at this point on the motion. So I, I think Ed and I are in the same place, whereas this is so minor and the advantages are so much greater, we're getting a piece of property that number one has, doesn't even, it has property, it has a building on it, a piece of property it doesn't even own, and it's totally off the side. I think the improvements are phenomenal, the location that it's set, I just think it's de minimis. I, I think the, the under, if this were in a development that were laid out, gone to the planning board, designed like, like Pleasant Hill, the conversation to me would be very different than a hundreds and more year old house sitting on a pile of rock. And that's kind of where I'm looking at. I'm also assuming this is all ledge up there.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that all takes into consideration, you know, I'm noticing that optional basement access, that's going to be some blasting, I'm assuming, if that goes forward.
Yeah, and it would be minimal at that, you know, we're trying to utilize, I mean, this, this whole region right here, I don't know if it printed on your plans, but the, I mean, this is alleged facade, basically, you know, and the, the goal is to try and utilize this hollow, which we hope exists in the ledge, to allow for some, I, I don't even think we'll get a car down there, but for some bicycle storage, some kayak storage, you know, the grill, throw the grill in there, that kind of stuff.
The other argument I would make is that, again, I think, I, I can't debate number four, the practical difficulties, I'm sorry, no other feasible alternatives available to the applicant except a variance. There are other feasible alternatives, but at what price? And that's the hard part, and that's why I asked the first question about how deep the property, how deep the building is. In other words, if the building is 62 feet deep, that's currently there, and the new building's 70 feet, that would be helpful to know. Do you know what those are?
I, I don't, I'm sorry. Not, I, I mean, I, I don't want to speak to it. It, because the rotation has changed, I mean, all, all I can say is that they are very comparable, and although we might be infringing a little bit more in, in this region, you know, to, to a matter of no more than five feet, we're holding to the other side, which is the side with the, you know, with the existing lawn, I mean.
I mean, the lawn isn't the issue. I like the fact of the trees. I like the fact that, that that's an area that has been protected by accident, by whatever reasons, over the years. Those setbacks weren't there when this house was built. They just weren't there. And so now we're turning it, we're making it more compliant.
I mean, the, the, the proposed house has to be, it, it has to be a little bit deeper by a few feet, because we're nixing this wing right here, and we're talking about an existing footprint, which is 1,400 square feet, and our proposed footprint, which is, you know, 1,500 square feet, 1,600 square feet. We're picking up a little bit of that increased footage in the front, but in all honesty, there has to be, and I apologize for not having this information ready, but there has to be a little bit of increase in the back. But the reality is, in terms of perception, it's going to be the same, in, in my opinion, it's going to be the same.
Mr. Chair? Normally, I would say no, feasible alternative, there is one. With this one, they've talked to the neighbors, the neighbors seem to be leaning towards, obviously, you didn't give us an answer, but.
Well, the town sent letters too.
Yeah, they seem to be leaning towards keeping that buffer with the trees and stuff, and wanting it to be built the way that it's being presented. Normally, I would say there's a feasible alternative, you got to go back, you got to just do what you got to do. But we always look at what neighbors are asking or coming before us for as well.
Although we still had to get over the findings of fact.
Right.
On that position, so if we're going to take the position of number four being no other feasible alternative, I wish we had more information. I had, I, I'm kind of of that mindset.
I, I like the design, I, I think it, it fits with the neighborhood, I like everything about the project. My only concern is that, that number four is one of those things, that if we open that door on this one, what happens in the future? If we're going to open the door, we have to have a real good justification. If we're going to open the door, we have to have a real good justification as to why we did it.
Am I allowed to talk, or?
Feel free.
Do you, I mean, is the justification not that we're effectively not, not, we're not just no further burden on abutters, but we're actually unburdening on abutters?
Each of the items have to stand on their own.
Okay.
So if you, if we go through, just for the sake of discussion, let's carry through the findings of facts and conclusions of law. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. I think you've established that.
The nonconforming lot.
Sitting off, there's a bunch of issues.
Yep.
And so that makes sense, and that I don't think anybody would have a problem with. The granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use of the fair market value of the abutting properties. Obviously, if anything, it's going to increase the value of the properties.
And Mr. Crockett's, you know, nobody's, I mean, granted, I'm not going to say that part, but nobody spoke in opposition to it.
And the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant prior owner. So we're okay, I'm going to skip number four. The granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. I think that's relatively straightforward, and again, you've addressed it, and I think from, that meets that requirement. The property's not in flood zone. Then you come to, it won't ever, this is where I think the argument for number four being overridden is legitimate. The granting of the variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on a natural environment, and depending on the damage of taking down mature trees that are in an area that has been around for hundreds of years, and really, that is a, it's its own ecosystem.
Can I just point out, we are, I mean, this is not, we have designed this to not take down any trees. I mean, there's a couple of dead trees that we're going to take down in the front yard, but in terms of these, in terms of this system of trees, we're not, the plan is to not remove any, and the homeowner has been explicit in that.
Is there any way to get us any additional information as to if you did put it in the footprint, what the adverse effect would be? More details on that?
Oh, sure. I mean, you, we, I'm happy to provide a drawing where the tree exists in this and is impacting, you know, it's, I mean, you can see right here, the tree is on the back of the house, which, you know, this drawing from the survey is not necessarily accurate. You know, I mean, the tree is actually much larger because it's from the aerial photograph that's impacting the back of the house. The general school of thought is that the line of foliage is the line of root system, and if you start to drive over that with construction, if you start to dig into that, you're going to significantly injure the tree to a point of possibly killing it. So I'm happy to provide a drawing where this, this structure exists entirely within the setback, and you'll see the significant, you know, impact to this mature.
Is that pine?
I think that would help.
Something they're all pines.
No, this is a hardwood.
Deciduous, really?
Yeah, it's some kind of elm. I'm not an arborist. It's some kind of elm or oak or something.
I'll be honest with you, looking at it from an insurance perspective, because that's what I do, if it's sitting on the top, the insurance company would want them to take it down anyway. If it's sitting on the house, they'll turn it back.
But we don't want that.
Well, we've got a motion on the table right now.
Could we, could we table for more information?
Yes, a second.
Could we conditionally approve it?
No.
Okay.
What we can do is if you, the one thing that we could do is that if you wanted to pull back, and I wanted to pull back, and have them come back next month with a, the prop, I would argue, proper drawings of the existing property sitting on a easy-to-read plan, and then the new one, and comparing those, that would be something. My personal opinion is that the least damage we can do to the impact of the trees up there, the better. I think that it's high, it's out of the way. It's, the setback, again, is the requirement of that area, but it's almost capricious. It's just, it's a rule that is there, but it doesn't meet a purpose in this case. I mean, again, you take the same piece of property, you put it in Pleasant Hills, totally different conversation, because that's a designed property, which came through the planning board, went through, take it to any other neighborhood, including mine. All of those are designed, this is a building that's been there for some one hundred years. I don't, I think the keeping, the more stable we keep the look and the feel of that area, because I do believe it's its own ecosystem. I don't mean that necessarily environmentally, but just from a, from a aesthetics point of view, I personally think that six overrides four, and that's why I'll come forward.
I think we just have to be very careful with that, and it would be helpful to have more information so we can completely justify that if we do go in that direction, because this is always one that we struggle with, and it's always one that gives us challenges.
So, Mr. Chair, and I agree with most of the comments that are being said regarding this, regarding for, or letter G in the application, there's no feasible alternative available to you except the variance. I would like to see that by shifting the house in a direction you would put at risk letter I, or number six, having an unreasonable adverse effect on the natural resources. And additionally, I think that indirectly ties in with number two, or letter E, the granting of the variance will have an unreasonable detrimental effect on either use of the fair market value of the abutting properties. I think that by removing the vegetation, you would cause, you may cause, or have the potential to cause detrimental effect on the value of an abutting property, if that was there before, that they were expecting as part of the value and character of the house that's already there. So those are my thoughts. It would be nice to see more for letter, number four, letter G, you would put at risk the protecting of vegetation and, and then, like I said, inadvertently affecting letter E as well.
For the standard rules, even though there is a motion on the table, any board member at any time can ask for a tabling.
I would request that we table.
But that's, again, up to, for any, with a specific reason spelled out, so the applicant can know what he's getting. We need a second on that, and that's not debatable.
I'll, did you just move on that?
Yeah.
Then I'll second that.
Yeah, I need some further clarifications to what the request is.
I think I was clear with my request when I said that I'd like to see what, a drawing of the adverse effect as to what it would show, so that we can clearly define this and look at it and see if it's going to have an adverse effect on the environment, and if it's going to have an adverse effect on other property values, and kind of see what we're, what we're looking at in the footprint and what you've presented. What you presented is good, and you're trying to keep things in line, taking into account the neighbors and everything else, but I think I'd like to table it based upon the fact of getting more defined drawings.
So, I mean, we can't just, you know, in all honesty, one of the functions of my company is that we start and finish in nine months, so, you know, we can't just, maybe for better clarification, you know, if we kind of extrapolate that, you know, this pencil mark exists, the twelve foot, you know, we carry it over here, I mean, we're losing about thirty percent of the tree. And that's what you're looking for?
I think what I'm hearing is we need, what you're asking for is a drawing, laying it out in the footprint, and laying it out as it sits, so that, and then, marking the trees appropriately, like, for instance, we know that, for instance, some subrises deciduous, I would have thought it would be evergreen, and evergreen rides across the top.
Maybe, maybe an arborist's opinion of the impact of the structure if it were moved all the way closer?
I think that would be a very good, very good argument.
I think what you guys need to do is quantify what information is missing that you need to know, so that Trevor can come back with that.
I'd just like to make one comment. I mean, we're talking about setbacks in existing zoning regulations that weren't in effect a hundred years ago, when this whole community was laid out. If you walk down that road, I'm sure you're going to see a bunch of houses that are no ways near in compliance with setbacks. And here we're arguing over a twelve-foot little area, and what he's trying to do is he's trying to move a house off somebody else's lot, put it in an area that's all cleared out, don't mess with the vegetation. Okay, he's got to come twelve foot forward, so what? It's not going to be any different than anything else in there.
But you could use the same argument. If it's only twelve feet, then why can't he move it back? If it's so de minimis, why can't he move it back? You guys are, you guys are making all kinds of arguments for why it can exist out of the footprint. The same arguments could be made for why it can't be in the footprint.
Why, Brian, if I took thirty percent out of you, I don't think you'd still exist.
Well, I want to see, I think what the board is asking for is show us that. You're, not that we don't trust you, you're a very smart guy.
Shouldn't.
But you admitted you're not an arborist. How do we know the root system is going to suffer when the building is moved, so that it's going to kill the tree? You know, bring us some facts. That's what's missing.
I think, I think that's, for instance, the issue with the tree I brought up, the reason why I thought, because of the ledge, it would be reasonable to assume that those are pines, pines, the root system is on top, deciduous, they're deep. So the likelihood of that tree having an impact by moving it back is very low, because the trees go down, the roots go down deep, whereas the pine, it would sit up high, you could do a lot of damage there. But that surprised me. That would be a lot easier argument to make that case if that were the case. So that's, nobody's fault, I mean, it's just, it's just the reality is that it would have been an easier argument for me to say that probably will take, that'll take that tree out.
Mr. Blais, I totally agree with you. In fact, I wouldn't, if it was a common sense rule that we need to deal with, I would say that there's no issue with this at all. The problem is that we do have to deal with further, further cases that come before us and could end up in court, and they can come back to this case and say, well, how did you justify that? Because we want significantly the same type of thing, so we have to justify why we were able to, to go ahead with this appeal and allow the appeal, and still keep ourselves out of court from other cases in the future. That's my only concern with this. I like, I like the design of the house. I think what he's doing, moving it and everything, I think it's the right thing to do, and I think it would look terrific there. But I'm concerned with, without, toward the right justification on it, I'm concerned with lawsuits in the future.
And I'm happy to provide further documentation, however, I mean, a thirty-five percent reduction in the legal, you know, in the, in the lot size versus what is legally acceptable, I mean, that's, that's significant, a thirty-five percent, you know, seven thousand square feet we're missing.
Right now, we've got a motion on the table with a second. We've got a request for a tabling without a second, and I've asked...
No, no, there was a second.
Then there's no more discussion. All in favor of tabling? Discussion is not eligible on the table, so all in favor of tabling? One, two, three. Opposed? One, two, it's being tabled. So, and just so the audience understands, and so you understand, sir, table is not up for discussion, and since it's been, I tabled, since I requested a table, and the second was placed in forward, that ends the debate, and so it, I did try to solve that, but it failed. So, they...
Can't win them all.
So, the issue at hand, the best I could give you for advice is justification as to why, number one, the design couldn't be a little bit different, whether that porch could be shortened up, whether or not the drawing, I, as you know, did not like the plot plan. To me, that's what I expected to see for a plot. I mean, to me, that's the plot plan, not, not this. So if I were going to...
I couldn't, I didn't...
It's just a full blueprint.
Okay.
So if, if I can interpret...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, like, interior, you want to see interior walls?
Interior, it's elevations. Elevations.
Like grade elevations?
It's just a term. I mean, basically, it lays out the property and how it sits on the lot, and defines it better.
A scale drawing showing everything around it.
It's called elevations, but it really is...
Well, we ought to have a survey. There ought to be a survey, right?
There should be, I mean, it's marked.
You ought to have a survey.
This is, this is a survey.
Excuse me, did you reference a survey on there? I mean, was that provided, was that based on some planned survey?
Survey performed on fourteen November twenty-eleven by Owen Haskell.
There you go.
He'll know it.
There you go.
This is...
I mean, that, that does...
This is what he did.
I think what the board's asking for is a little more information on that, and maybe a full set, you know, instead of splitting that up with the photo, make it a little bigger so everything's a little clearer for them.
You can't, you can't see on there exactly where the house is over, going over the line, or which...
The setback lines didn't show up. Ed's right, they didn't show up.
Oh, they didn't print?
They didn't.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
They're there, they're very ghosted, you can't really...
Okay, I apologize. I didn't realize that.
And I think what Mark had, sorry, I don't want to talk, I think what Mark was referring to earlier was that it would be maybe easier to show the existing house and how that sits with those darker areas, and then show another view with the proposed house. It's a little confusing to them, they're not getting the full effect of how the existing house sits versus how the new house is proposed to sit. I think you're trying to show all that in one view, and it might be clearer in two.
Okay.
I think they'd also like to see the difference between the proposed square footage of the footprint and the existing square footage of the footprint.
And not just foot...
And some dimensions.
Dimensions, dimensional.
From the structure to the property line, from the structure to the tree that needs to be saved.
To the setback.
Uh, that kind of stuff. You might also, I was, if the chair doesn't mind, do you know anything about the property behind it, that house? Is that a newer house? Is that an older house? Is that anything you've ever had, your company's ever had anything to do with?
Unfortunately, no, it was done in the nineties, so...
But it has been redone?
Uh, this addition was done, yes.
Okay.
It was added to in the early nineties, I believe.
I didn't check the record on that one, so I...
Who was on the picture?
I believe it was this section.
That was added to in the nineties, the early nineties, based on the construction.
Boy, that looks really close to the property line, doesn't it?
It does, and I think that may be worth investigating, too. They maybe didn't respect...
I did not say anything.
Missed it by that much, Dan.
But here's my point, and here's a point I'd like to make with the chair's indulgence, is that if you were going to preserve the existing building and maybe try to reduce some of those, as you call them, burden on the other property, the encroachment onto the other property, and so on and so forth, I think there can be a lot of arguments made to help you do those kinds of things. The minute you wipe something off the face of the earth and start new, you have a clean slate, a clean palette, if you will. And yes, it might be expensive to blast ledge, and it might take up some of the yard areas, and it may encroach on some vegetation, but I'd be interested in an arborist's opinion one way or the other. Can we trim certain limbs and open that up and get the, get the vegetation away from the house when it's moved into a compliant position? I'd be interested to know, is there a root system there? What would the impact be on that? Not is there, but what would the impact be on that root system? Would it kill the tree? What are the chances of it killing the tree? Is there a design, a building design, or a change in that building design that would accommodate that, still preserves most of that vegetation? I think it's unrealistic to expect to preserve all of it. You're starting over with a new structure. The expectation is that now you can make that compliant. Clearly, there's a building window there. I understand vegetation and other things are in the way. I understand that's not what they purchased, but it's not, they're the ones making the decision to tear the building down and relocate. The burden must be on the applicant to show why they can't do it in a compliant way. I'm not saying the board can't approve it, you just, there's just not enough proof, not enough facts.
I agree with everything you said, except for, they're not really making the decision. You know, they bought a house that has existed with deferred maintenance for many years, and it's cost prohibitive to, I mean, we can...
How long have they owned it?
A year. You know, I mean, not, I don't know, you know, plus or minus six months, you know, I mean...
They didn't inspect the property before they bought it?
They did, but, I mean, Brian, that, you know, that's, that's unrealistic.
I have to ask.
You can, and you certainly can, but it's, you know, it's unrealistic, you know, you know how these things go, over time.
I'd like to stop it right here. Here's another thing you might want to give some serious thoughts about, is look at side setbacks as opposed to front, getting a limited reduction of yard size rather than, rather than a practical difficulty variance.
Yeah, we can't, I don't believe we...
Not on a tear.
No, a tear, no, no.
Yeah.
There was, there was one very similar to this, and I can't remember if it was a couple months ago, or three, four months ago, and what they did is they came in with a two sets of plans. That was very helpful for us. One showing it as it sits right now, and one showing the new plan, if it was in the envelope where it was, and they kind of overlapped each other, so we could actually see where it was, and, um, Mr. Longstaff's comment about the determination from an arborist, too. I mean, that would be great. We need to back up our decisions. We need to have justification as to why we're doing something. If we're going to go and say this overrides this, we need to have as much justification as possible to do that. The more information you can give us, the better.
Number four is simple. No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance. And I'm going to leave it there. Um, do I have a motion? Uh, it's right, we're stopping there.
Sorry, we're tabling.
It's been tabled, it's been tabled.
Is, have, do you have enough guidance on what kind of information the board would like to receive and come back?
I think so.
That's important.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to elaborate.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have there been anything else, uh?
No more comments?
No more comments? Anybody comments? I, I like Brian's idea of emailing out next, uh...
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Does the board feel like a, a refresher from Phil Sossier, Towns attorney, on just some, I, I know there's been some questions raised from some of the newer members especially, about what's our role in enforcement of conditions that we place on approvals, um, how much leeway do we have in, in different areas? Would a brief refresher be a good idea, perhaps next, next month? Would, if I get that together, maybe...
You won't be here.
Meet it an hour, an hour earlier, and I'll try to bring food?
I just won't be here next month.
Well, I'd like to...
I told you you could bring your wife, it's a great date.
I know, I know. No, it's...
Have great food.
It'd be a great fifth anniversary, I know it would be, but...
I, I think it's a great idea, because I would love to know what the enforcement is with some of these things, because some of these things we approve, and I drive by on a daily basis, and I look at them, and I'm going, this isn't what was approved. And I know you guys have limited powers and manpower.
Well, I'd like to know, you know, when you see that happen, I wish you'd let me know.
Well, I think we did, with one, with the restaurant.
Yeah, okay. We could talk about that, if the board wants to talk about that, we could talk about that. In the meantime, uh, in the meantime, send me your suggestions of what you'd like Phil to address.
Okay.
That would help, because we'll only give them an hour, or, or whatever you feel is appropriate, but I think a lot of questions can get asked and answered in an hour, um, and it would be good to have that legal, um, perspective.
Don't want to go too many of the, the...
I'd like to have a request to do this in October. I know it's...
In October?
Because this way we get some newer members on here, great, and...
The only thing I, I caution is, if, if October looks like it gets loaded up with another six, although we handled them very, very well today.
We, we haven't done it, we, what we can do is we can deal with the realities of what we have. But, but in that matter, if we're doing it before seven anyway, it's not going to fit in.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll, I'll, I'll put that down for October, and we'll put something together for that. And in the meantime, feel free to send me suggestions of what you'd like more information on, or like Phil to come prepared to speak to you about. Um, so, October.
Thanks, Brian.
Um, do you want to talk about Bailey's, now or offline?
Well, I think if we need, we're going to talk about Bailey's, I think it should be online, in, in public.
We've, we've had everything else online, so, yeah.
Okay, so, so there was apparently, I was not here the last meeting, and apparent, and, and I know the meeting before it was brought up. And here's the take on that. Uh, the only thing they've done, and I believe it was in place, I think, I think Mr. Frank may have misspoken, that, that electrical conduit was already in. That was already operational at the time he came in. I, I didn't bother to, I didn't know that for certain, but I suspected that it was. So, what they did is they plugged some lights in for the, the canopy. Your decision, going back to the meeting, minutes.
Mr. Stark moved to approve appeal number twenty-five seventy-three with following conditions. The temporary canopy for seasonal use may be placed on the new pavement from May one until September thirty, and must be securely anchored. This approval does not include the placement of a tent with sidewalls that enclose the space. Number two, the electric and water utility lines shall not be connected or placed in service since they were not permitted or inspected. No exist, and number three, no existing non-conforming use on the property shall be enlarged, extended, expanded, or converted without approval of the zoning board of appeals. The simple fact of running an electrical line is not an expansion or enlargement or extension of the non-conforming use.
However, I think, and I want to speak to Mr. Stark, but how I understood that to me was, that was the fifteen-yard penalty. In other words, we're taking...
That's not what you said. It said because it was not permitted or inspected. We did an after-the-fact permitted inspection on that line and approved it to be there. Not the gas line, not the sewer line, not the water line, no other utilities, because those would be used for possible cooking, um...
Can we, can we, for, just to clarify, because I think, I, I know that Karen's on the same thing, thinking that I was, because I actually came in, I, I was surprised that they had given it. And I think you're correct, from the rules, I would agree. I'd love to hear the actual tape, not, not hear it, but see the, the actual language, because that's, obviously, that's an abridged version. And if that's how we did it, we, I, I know my intent was to say, I want a penalty.
We, we had some discussion on it, and we, we specifically talked about that there, there wouldn't be any electrical or water, and so...
But it was already there.
It was there, and they told us that it was there. They said that the lights were on, but they were not hooked up, and they were not going to be hooked up.
I think that was wrong.
And, well, that, that was the intent, or our intent, and the way that we discussed it was that that would not be used.
And I think that we need to have a...
So, it would prohibit them from running electrical anywhere in their, on their property, without zoning board?
Like Chairman Verun, like Chairman Verun just said, that was kind of, kind of their penalty for, for all this stuff that they did without any permits. That was kind of us saying, all right, we're going to let you get away with this, but you hook up anything else, you got to come back for permits, and you got to come to us to get the permission.
They came back for permits, to us for permits. You guys don't issue permits.
I think we specifically said that they had to come back to this board for, for permission, didn't we?
Well, you, the only thing they can come back to the board for is another expansion or extension or, or conversion of an un-conforming use, or a variance.
Well, if, if we can get transcript of, of that, that would...
I'd be happy to do that, but I think, I think this is, this is very clear to me. This is very clear to me. They could turn around the next day and apply for an electrical permit to run a conduit out to that thing and do the very same thing, but they wouldn't use the one that they already installed because you guys didn't want some...
I, I guess the question would be, would we have allowed what they even got based into that? Would we have come back and said, no, on the whole thing, if we're going to, and retract what they were given? Because they, what they did is they took, they took A and, and then extrapolated that, and were saying, whoa, 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 wait a minute. This is what you told us you were going to do, here's what you ended up doing. Had we known that, we probably would have given it to you, but the truth is, you didn't give us all the information, and then took more. So, rather than penalizing you completely and taking that away altogether, then we'll leave it at this, but we don't want you doing anything else. If you want to come back and talk to us, look us in the eye. I think that was the intent. Now, it may not be legally what the result is, but I think that was the intent of the people who made the motions. I, I don't know that, and I don't know the results of the legal side of that, but I do believe...
I'm not even sure that you have the authority to do that.
We may not. But I, but I think it...
You may know what you want to do, and what you want to do may be fine, but I don't believe that you have the legal authority to do it.
Well, and that's, that's what the sphere cuts for. Um, but I don't think, uh, the intent, again, I don't know what it said on record. I don't know, I don't remember.
I went by this, and we issued the after-the-fact permit.
I get that totally, and I, and I respect how you handled it, and, and I'm okay with that. However, I do believe that Karen was talking about is exactly what Jim's talking about. Um, and what...
You guys can go each individually or as a group, go back and watch the video tape from that meeting, if you want to review what the actual...
I think the easiest thing is just to, to get a transcript, or email it to us or whatever. I'm, I will, but I'm, I'm not sure. I think the real issue here is, um, how we, if we have to, to get more specific in our terminology, I can get where you may have heard one thing versus another, if you've read that a month later.
It wasn't, it wasn't what I heard. I'm going by the written document.
Okay, but the written document is not legal.
I don't remember what I heard. There was a lot of stuff said that night. I went by the, that's why, that's why reviewing the minutes and approving the minutes is not just a cursory thing that you do. You should be very clear. When you read those minutes and approve them, they should reflect what you actually thought they were supposed to say.
But I think what you're seeing is that I read it exactly the way I heard, heard it. You read it exactly the way you heard it.
I think you read it the way you wanted to hear it. I'm not sure that's the way it actually wanted.
But I think that's what you said, what you did also. And I'm not looking to blame. I'm not, that's not my goal here. My goal here is to point out, the reality is that at least three of us disagree. Now...
Let me just add some theoreticals, if I might.
Sure.
What, what is the problem?
The problem was that the continuous, uh...
The lights are hanging from a canopy. What is, is that...
On, on the issue...
I mean, I'm not quite sure what's going on.
Well, and, and you, you kind of tied to it earlier on, at the last, at that meeting. We have got a, a pattern of behavior that is disrespectful of the Towns' rules.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that one bit.
And we were trying to do a stop...
I don't want to go into the philosophy of it. What is wrong with lights hanging from a canopy tent that you guys approved?
We were trying to stop the behavior.
What's wrong with that?
We're just trying to stop the behavior.
You think you can, okay, yeah.
I think our thought process was that we didn't know the electrical was fully functioning. I mean, you, you misissued the after-the-fact permit, but I, I think my thought philosophy on it anyways was that there would be no lights turned on or no electrical used out there, or water.
But it wasn't reflected in anything that I, I could lay my hands on. There was nothing, no, none, nothing of that nature was said in the minutes? It wasn't said in the decision, in the ruling that you signed?
Um, again, I, I, we can call whatever we want. How I interpret something, how you interpret something is, 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 that's why the word interpret is used. The issue at hand is, take that off the table, how do we prevent that in the future? Well, I don't know.
Do a better job at the minutes and the decision.
Yeah, or, uh, we could go the other way with that, too, um, with, with paying more attention to the board's needs. So, I...
That, that's why the minutes are there.
But I think what you're hearing from four people now is that we all felt that that spoke to what we thought was going to happen.
And our absent board member was one, the one, one of the people that actually came in and mentioned it, that she thought that there would be no electrical hooked up or anything.
And it says...
And she's not here, so it's...
Says that no electrical because there were no permits or inspections. So, we went back and we did the after-the-fact process, which many of you are familiar with, to get that inspected and permitted.
Oh, he's looking at the minutes more than...
I know there was some, there was some strong words from the planning board on this one, too, that they came down...
But you guys don't, you guys don't have, I don't believe you have that authority, okay? You have authority to place conditions on it, but if someone applies for the permit, that's a permitted use to run electrical.
Even if they've already started, even if they've already started the work.
Well, that's what, it's, the after-the-fact permit, the process is that we get a licensed electrician to inspect and issue an affidavit stating that it was installed correctly, because we didn't get a chance to see it. The, the permit is paid double the permit fees as a fine for doing the work without a permit. That's the standard process, that's the way we went about doing it. I would, if they came in today and asked for an electrical permit to run conduit to the back parking lot, so that they could put an outlet out there to plug a generator, or to plug cars, uh, block heaters, or whatever, what use they needed it for, I would have no reason not to issue that permit.
Because it's in the envelope. That, that one wasn't.
It doesn't matter what, whether it's in the envelope or not.
But I mean, that, that piece was built out without approval.
But you approved it.
We approved it with conditions. Again, we come back, I don't want to beat this to death, but...
I'm, I'm fine. You want to hear the record, so that's what we'll, we'll get for you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Was it, move to adjourn? Just adjourn. Yeah, in favor? Any missed? Thank you very much.